Hey Pedro. Hey Tracy.
Hello.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good evening.
Get myself organized.
Aren't we all?
Today is Friday, isn't it?
It's the new Friday.
Yeah.
Hey Jason.
All right, we're at the two-minute warning mark here, so we're still missing Mayor Pro Tem. So sit tight, we'll be on in a minute. Well, there we go. I think we have everybody on. Welcome, everybody. It is now 6:30, so welcome to this Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It's virtual again. And this is April 27, 2021. Before we get going and call this to order, I'm gonna have the town clerk read a statement into the record and do the roll call attendance. Melody, it is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics with relation to this meeting. For those participants who may not be very familiar with these meetings, please make sure to keep your video on as the meeting is in progress and to mute yourselves when you're not talking. With regards to how board members are going to participate in this meeting, the mayor will be calling on each of you individually to provide comments and votes. When voting, please remember to identify yourselves by stating your name and your vote. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand and be mindful of your background. If we are in the middle of a presentation and you are raising your hand but not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Most importantly, we want to make sure that board members are able to participate in this meeting fully, so if you experience any technical difficulties, please text me so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you're present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brendan McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Jason Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Present.
And Commissioner Pedro Morey.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Great. Thank you, Melody. Appreciate that. All right, this meeting is now called to order. Tonight, on our ceremony opening, I'd like to certainly recite the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'd also like to have an extended special moment of silence for one of our fallen firefighters this week, Captain Ronald McGarvey. He passed away after his shift on Monday morning. So if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then hold it a little bit longer, remain standing for the special moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're ready to go. Again, we have, I don't ever see the adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests for changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing no hands raised, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. We have a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to approve tonight's agenda. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Commissioner Morey, aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Brendan McMillan, aye.
Very good. Thank you all. We have tonight's agenda adopted. As I understand it, there are no general public comments tonight, so we're gonna move down for the adoption of tonight's consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as published.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call vote again, please. Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Back to Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Brendan McMillan, aye.
Very good. Thank you. We are approved on the consent agenda. Gonna move down right this now to, right down to recognition, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Jeffrey Wells, our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. I'm delighted to recognize Paula Key for her 10 years of service to the town. She started on April 1st, April Fool's Day, 2011, as the Assistant Tax Collector. She added on accounts payable duties in 2014 and then became our full-time tax collector in 2018. And so I asked her if she had a few words that she wanted to say this evening in her absence because her, her son is at a, a ballgame tonight, so she had that responsibility. And I think we also took a picture, hopefully that Nick can get put up here for the actual award that she was handed. But she, in her, in her time here over the last 10-plus years, she made mention of some things that she remembers fondly during her time here. And one was that we used to have a fish camp named Captain's Galley. She worked with the famous Bonnie McManus, one of, one of Waxall's most famous employees, the retired clerk that worked here for close to 40 years. The Police Department, I guess she remembers fondly when it was in the now Pizza Hut building. And watching the Duncan McDonald House get transformed into what it is today, then going to the dedication of Town Creek Park, installing wayfinding signs. And she actually remembers fondly working with paper, which we don't do a whole lot of here in, inside Town Hall anymore. We've done a pretty good job of going paperless with probably the exception of my office. We had a video rental store and stacks, Hair Play, Summer Fields, and a few other businesses that were located in the open lot in front of our more apartments. So she said there's a whole lot more to the list that she could go on and on about, but those are just a few things that she remembers very fondly in, in her time and beyond here. So just really wanna tell her and the rest of the staff how much we appreciate her here and how well she does with collecting taxes. Every year, we are well over 99%, which is outstanding. You're doing really, really well if you're over 99% collection every single year. So just wanna congratulate her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, and I'll say this publicly for Paula. Thank you very much for all your service and how you serve the town of Waxall all this time. I know that having that rate of collection, boy, in your retirement, you could probably clean up somewhere as a collection agent. So that's a, quite an accomplishment to keep it there, and she's pleasant the whole time as well. So really appreciate her serving the town. So congratulations on the 10-year anniversary.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move it down after this. The presentations here, we've got a presentation by our auditor, Travis Hardy from Strickland Hardy, and I'm going to let him sign on. I don't see him on yet. We got him hooked up here in the office somewhere. There you go. Somebody could help him get live there. I'll turn it over to him when he lights up. Travis, you'll need to go left corner there and unmute yourself and then do the video. There you go.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, so.
The zoom thing.
I wanted to take the opportunity, say good evening, Mayor and council members, and I wanted to introduce Mr. Travis Hardy from Strickland Hardy. He's a partner in that organization. And he's really put a lot of time into this audit based on, it's his first year with us. So he had to go back and make numbers, add with the last fiscal year audit and, and set up a whole lot of things. So I think he did an excellent job, and it was a pleasure to work with him. I will let Mr. Hardy give you his report.
Well, good evening, everyone, Mayor and Commissioners. It's, first off, a privilege to be here and present this summary of the audit of FY '20. And I'm going to see if I can share my screen and go through this summary report real quick with you guys. Do you, did that come up? Do y'all see the report here?
No. Hold on, Travis. I'll be right there.
Let me see.
Rosemary to the rescue. Again, love it. Travis, I can share my screen and I've got it up. Just let me know.
I think maybe I figured, there we go. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good deal. Um, sorry about that. This, uh, if I can now figure out how to scroll down. There we go. Okay. Um, first off, just wanted to give you a quick summary here of the services that we provided this year. Obviously, we audited the financial statements for FY '20. We assisted in the preparation of those financial statements as well with the help of Rosemary and her staff. And we are, would report on any observations or recommendations for improvements that we, we saw during the audit. We also consult with any accounting ma, or own any accounting matters as requested. And obviously, we attend the board meetings and present the audit. One thing I wanted to stress too here is we are independent, and this is required by the 2018 Yellow Book. And we met all independence requirements there, and there were no events that occurred during the engagement that would have impaired our independence. Now, next big thing overall, the opinion on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get on the fair presentation of those financial statements. We would have issued opinions on major programs, but in FY '20, the town of Waxall did not reach the level of having to have a single audit performed, which would have required additional testing on federal programs. However, I foresee that becoming something that will have to be done in the near future, probably even FY '21. The expenses for federal programs continue the way they have. We also issued supplemental information, which is the management's discussion and analysis, the information on the pension liabilities for the Leosa, as well as the local government employee retirement system. This is information that's required within governmental audits. However, we do not issue an opinion on that information. We just basically ask some questions and make sure that the numbers tie to the financial statements, but we do not do enough testing on that information to issue an opinion. There is some other supplemental information that is required, I'm sorry, that is not required to be a part of the financial statements, but is included in the financial statements. That information, we do issue an in relation to opinion on, basically meaning that the information in those schedules is materially accurate and materially correct and ties back to the basic financial statements, which is why we issue an in relation to opinion instead of an actual opinion on the information itself. Efficiencies and recommendations for this audit was, we issued no material weaknesses findings. We had no significant deficiency findings that we noted, and we had no other recommendations that were of a magnitude that would require them to be in writing. So which is all boils down to the financial statements that were presented to us for audit. The information was materially correct, and the, we noted no material weaknesses in internal controls, nor did we note any significant deficiencies in, in any aspects of internal controls as well. All just basically means the Finance Department is doing a fantastic job in what they do, and their controls are in place as we saw it for FY '20. Little bit of contact information there for myself and TJ Strickland, my business partner. Either of us, you need to get in contact with. That's just our information there. Now, under the regulations of audit, we are required to present two letters to you, the, the Board of Commissioners, or those charged with governance. And I'll quickly go through these letters. Just, a lot of this just, just language that needs to be in there, but I'll hit the highlights on this real quick. Main thing in here being estimates within the accounting records. And there are two basic pieces of information in the financial statements that are estimates. One of those being the depreciation on fixed assets for your capital assets. And this is an estimated amount each year based on the life of the asset. The life of the asset is also an estimated number, so for, therefore that depreciation is gonna be an estimated number as well. The other estimate is the current portion of compensated absences. And this is an estimate because no one knows who's gonna take off during the next year, how much leave is gonna be taken, and therefore that is an estimated number as well. And both of these estimates are allowable under GAAP rules, and so there's no, there's no issue with that. It's totally acceptable, and based on the history of the town of Waxall, the numbers that we present in the audit report are in line with previous years. Let me see. Good thing here, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. And there were some corrections to the financial statements that were made. And Rosemary made all necessary corrections to the financial statements while we were here. And at the end of this document will be a list of those entries, just for your information. Again, just the required information that we need to give you. We had no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. And that is really about it. Everything else that's in this letter, I'll already briefly mentioned at the very beginning, such as the required supplemental information. That's it for the first letter. The second letter here is where, if there had been findings on material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, that information would be detailed in this letter. Since there were none, we so state, and basically that's why this letter is so short. So really nothing else to go over in that letter. This next part is gonna be just some graphs and information that kind of puts the financial statements in a picture format that's sometimes just easier to read and understand. And we get this information in a five-year trend, so you can kind of see how things are going over the past five years. And this first chart here is your governmental fund balance, which is really all of your funds combined into one column. And you can see here that fund balance from 2016 to 2020 increased each year over the past five years. And I broke this particular chart down between general fund and all the other funds combined. Because most are interested in the general fund itself. And you can see there, it went, your increase in general fund in 2016 went from 5.5 million to 8.1 billion in 2020. This graph here just shows your governmental fund balance broken down into categories. Non-spendable, which includes your prepaid's and your inventory, your restricted fund balance, your committed fund balance, your assigned fund balance, and your unassigned fund balance. And these are just categories that are for governmental reporting purposes. Each level has a little bit of a higher restriction on it. And so that's the reason these are in different categories. And you can see this changes from year to year depending on how the fund balances, what category they're in as far as their funding source, and whether the board you have assigned or committed certain fund balances. This next chart here really is just a picture of your revenues by source. Adverlorum taxes, other taxes, intergovernmental funding, which could be your state or federal funding, or other local funding, and then just another category there. And obviously, and you can see your adverlorum taxes are your, your biggest revenue stream, and, and that has increased each year over the past five years. This is just the numbers that the graph is presenting. Again, you can, you can see your revenues went from 9.9 in 2016 to 15.3 million in 2020. Your governmental expenditures, so a little bit harder to read graph here. Again, from 2016 to 2020, and each of your departments are presented here. And it's getting down to really, that's a, the graph is pretty, but it's a little hard to read. But here you can see the breakdown in the numbers. And by far the highest department in 2020 was your Public Safety, followed by your Economic and Community Development Department. And then the rest is kind of spread out pretty evenly in some of them. But 12.9 million in expenditures for FY '20. So. Now, that was your governmental funds, which is again is all your funds combined. Kind of wanna take a quick look at your general fund. This is your general funds, fund balance for the last five years, broken down by the categories that you see here. Your unassigned fund balance is really what, what funds you have available for the next fiscal year. And it increased in 2016 from the 3.6 million to 2020 being almost 7 million. So that's really good, that fund balance, that unassigned fund balance number is growing. This is just your general fund revenue stream by fund source. Again, your adverlorum tax is gonna be the major funding source here as well. And looks like in, pretty much following your intergovernmental for the last three years was your second strongest stream. And here again are just the numbers that represent that graph. Your expenditures for the general fund are pretty much gonna mirror the other one. Obviously, again, your Public Safety is gonna be the largest department expenditure-wise. And it looks like it's followed here by your general government. This chart here is your working capital ratio, which really is your current assets over your current liabilities. And your current ratio is, is really, really high. In 2020, it's 100, or 1,442%, which is, just really means you've got a lot of current assets and very little current liabilities, which is phenomenal. Just shows that your town is very healthy, very strong. And you've got a lot of assets well above liabilities, current liabilities. So again, just really alludes to the strength of your town. And that really is the presentation. These other documents, next few pages, like I said, are just the journal entries that, that Rosemary has and is, is, has posted to the General Ledger to bring us in alignment with one another. But again, just needed to give y'all that information as a requirement for auditing standards. And that's really all I have unless you have any questions that maybe I can answer real quick for you.
Any questions for Travis from anyone across the board? A little bit of an observation. I see some of the numbers have moved around depending on where we park certain things for this year. Rosemary, I remember you transferring some money in and out of places. They look a little bit different, but we're, looks like we're doing our job.
I think also, Travis, can you scoot back up where you show the functions, the departments? Oh, right there. Okay. So, so. So, so when you look at general government, when they do the audit, they pull in various departments. So that's administration, IT, some, some other things. Public safety, that's the police department and emergency management. So you can, you can see that, that's one of the things that I'm trying to update for this next fiscal year is assigning functions. And that's exactly why, so that people know. Public service and transportation, that's engineering. Environmental protection, sanitation. So that's what those functions are. So if you're looking at our numbers, that you're not going to see the department names there, but they're listed there by function. So the numbers look in the wrong, in a different location that you're used to seeing them, that could be one reason why.
Right. And that's what I was referring to. So appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from anybody on the board? All right. Well, seeing none. Thank you both Travis for your presentation tonight. Rosemary, thank you for a wonderful job that you're doing getting us all the ship righted and play, you know, the money placed in the right accounts, the audits. So I know it's a lot of work and we've got some more coming to us in this budget season. But I feel really good about where we're heading. So thank you both for the work on, on all this. And certainly especially to Rosemary and the team that Jeff leads. Thank you all for putting this house in order.
Thank you.
So we have a motion.
If there's no other questions or comments, then we're looking for a motion to accept the annual audit. So I will look for that motion from someone.
I'll make
with the Commissioner Simpson.
I'll make the motion to accept the annual audit for fiscal year 2019, 2020 as presented.
Very good. The motion is on the floor to accept. So roll call vote please. Commissioner Westlock.
Commissioner Westlock, aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
For town McMillan.
Brandon McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Moray.
Commissioner Moray, aye.
To Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Very good. Thank you. unanimous across the board there. So we'll move on. Thank you all for all your work and the continuance of that hard work. So once again, job well done. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to another presentation that we have here. We have our Haven Creative Agency up. We're going to watch them join the screen here in a second. We've got presenter would be the owner of Haven, which is Jenny Bucel. So Jenny, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Oh, awesome. And let me just make sure is Peter on? He's there. Okay, perfect. All right. Well, good evening, Waxahau leadership. I am excited to present the update on the, the website project. And we have with us Peter Ampy from Granicus, our website developer. And he has really been an integral part of the whole project. He's serving as our program kind of manager overseeing all of the elements, making sure that they're working together and communicating with us. And so I thought, who better to present the user experience than him? So we're going to walk through where we are today and kind of where we're going in the future, hoping to, you know, launch it pretty soon. So I'm going to toss it to you, Peter, and you can share your screen and give your intro.
Well, thank you very much for the introduction, Jenny, and thank you everyone for having me on this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to hit share on my screen here. And I'll begin giving you all a sneak peek of your new website. I've got two windows opened up, first of all, because we do have two distinct audiences that we're trying to target with this website project. Of course, our first audience that we really want to make sure has a great experience with the new website is the general public. People who will be visiting the site include your residents, visitors, business owners, and, and really other government agencies are included. It's, it's really a very broad group. But the second distinct audience that we are focusing on targeting is going to be the town staff. The people who are actually responsible for updating and maintaining this website. And so tonight you'll see me kind of jump back and forth between what I'm showing you here is the backend. And then here is the front end of the site. So I'll talk a little bit about, about each of them. I'll kind of show you a couple of things here and there. I do want you all to know the town staff does have training scheduled for this website during the first part of May. So very shortly here, the town staff will be learning how to use the website, how to update content in the backend. And all of their questions will be answered. I know that you're all very anxious about a timeline. From a technical perspective, assuming there are no hiccups in a large project, which is of course a very big assumption, as you all know. We're looking at perhaps the end of June, mid to end of June is a reasonable timeline for launching this website. So again, a large assumption saying that there are no hiccups along the way and that all the questions are answered during training. These projects, of course, have a way of evolving sometimes. Let's talk a little bit about your homepage on your website. So it is a shorter homepage than you currently have. Your current homepage is a longer scrolling homepage. What you've got here is a static image background. And it scrolls down just a very little bit here. So I'll talk about all the elements on the homepage, but it is important to note it's shorter. At the very top, we have our main navigation. This is a type of functionality you all should be familiar with. Let's see if I can get it to interact with me. So government departments, we've got content migration. It's happening right now. It's a task that is in progress. So the Granicus team is still working on migrating content to the new website. But this is the main navigation here. You'll notice big search bar. This is a search centric design. We do want to allow website visitors to interact with the site in a number of different ways, including searching as a primary function. I'll touch on the search functionality. I'll show you a search result here in a moment. Below the search bar, and as you scroll down, there's a couple of things I want to point out. We have a sticky navigation. The main navigation will stay with the user no matter how far they scroll down the site on any page, including your interior pages. This is not a functionality that I think you guys currently have. And the search bar also is an icon here. So users always will have the inner opportunity to interact with the search and with the main navigation. Additionally, when users click on this icon, there's an overlay. Again, very search focused design. Some popular searches that we have in place, we've got sample here. Town staff can edit these and select popular searches to help drive traffic towards key initiatives at the town or towards commonly searched for items. As we scroll down the homepage, I'm just going to touch on, we have buttons here. These buttons right now are placeholder text with placeholder icons. They are not actively set up. We will be setting these up during CMS training and after. So these right now are placeholders. I can show you just how easy they are to edit because I do want to show you a little bit of the backend here. Before I do so, the rest of the homepage consists of a spotlight. I often describe the spotlight section as a billboard. This is another place where you can put key initiatives at the town, upcoming important events such as election day, or if you all have a Fourth of July parade, whatever sort of information you want to put out there for the public to see on your homepage. This is a great opportunity to do so. Calendar of events and news items, placeholder content is in here right now. So these are going to be populated by town staff during and after training. And then we do have a data visualization component here at the bottom. If I refresh my page and scroll to the bottom, you can see these numbers roll up. I'm sure it's a little glitchy over the Zoom meeting. Rest assured, it's everything to do with Zoom, nothing to do with the website. When you all visit it yourself, it'll look very smooth. All of this is editable, very easily so by, by town staff. So I want to just kind of show you a little bit on the backend here. I mentioned, we want the website to be easy for staff to manage and to maintain. Our biggest goal here is to enable staff to do their jobs effectively and efficiently. And the backend of the website really will facilitate that goal. So I clicked on the homepage. I'm clicking this edit button up top. We talked about these call to action buttons here just a moment ago. I click edit. Perhaps instead of jobs, we want to have one of them be budgets. Okay, budgets is a page that I know is ready. We'll talk a little bit about it. I know where it is. So you can actually set up a link to the budgets page. Hit save. Hit publish. And that's it. Now we've updated one of those buttons. So if I go back over here, I refresh my window. You can see my first item now is budgets. When a user clicks on that button, take into the budgets page. So that's about the simplicity of updating and editing the website. From a user experience perspective, there are about a dozen people whose video screens are being shared here. At least I'm sure there are more listening in. For the dozen people who are participating here tonight, all of us may use a website in a slightly different way. I know Jenny is very search focused. I like to use the main navigation to find that content. So you've got multiple ways to find this budgets page. Because I know a little bit about how local governments work, I may look under departments and I might start scrolling down and I find the budgets page here. So I click on that. But we don't want to force users to have to understand the structure of your town government in order to find content. So one of the sections that we do have that we are working on building out is very much in progress is the I want to section here. Users may see, I want to see budgets. They click on this and they'll be redirected to the exact same page here. So you've got multiple ways to find the same content. Additionally, many users will search on Google or their preferred search browser. So all of our webpages are submitted to Google and to major browsers for searching. We do make sure that they index our sites so that users, when they search on Google, will land on the appropriate pages. So if you were to search town of Waxahau, North Carolina, city budget, you'll find that page at the top of Google and you can click on it there. In addition to the call to action buttons, the main navigation and searching on Google, we also have a site search here. So if I type in budgets, I can see that it is my top result for the page here. Additionally, you do have the opportunity to filter your search. Perhaps you're looking for a fiscal year budget, the actual document, instead of a page that just shows you that. You can, for example, click on documents and search just for those documents and you can see
Which we don't currently have. I think that's important to note. We currently can't because you search right now, you get a ton of pages, but you can't sort by department or document, which is key.
Yep. So we can very quickly narrow it down to just seven search results. Or in this case, I'm actually going to look for the page. So this is a really great tool in terms of improved search functionality. And I'll take you back to the page that we've seen a couple of times now. So all of this is to emphasize and to say, we are really heavily focused on the front end user experience. And we're really heavily focused on the backend staff experience, right? We talked a little bit about the homepage already. We talked about search functionality. Let's talk a little bit about ADA accessibility. Many of you are familiar with the term ADA and what it means. For websites, we follow WCAG. WK guidelines are our equivalent of ADA accessibility for the web. So our commitment is that the website is built to WCAG AA 2.0 compliant standards. Basically, the highest standards for government websites that many of our competitors and other vendors will also be able to commit to. We make sure that you've got sufficient contrast for people who are colorblind, low vision users. We make sure that the website is crawlable by screen readers for people who are fully blind or partially blind. And other assistive technologies can also interact with our webpages, our forums, our calendar items, so on and so forth. The staff will get trained on some of these items as well to make sure that staff doesn't break our WK accessibility that we've already built into the site. Another item that is important to talk about is our mobile experience as well. It's 2021. More and more people are visiting your site via mobile. General analytic trends say 50 to 60% of all site traffic on government websites comes from mobile phones. So the site is responsive. I have a pretty large desktop screen that I'm working from here. But as you can see, you know, this is something more like the width of a small laptop. The site has the same appearance and functionality at various screen sizes. I'm actually going to shrink it all the way down. This is approximating what it would look like on mobile. So on mobile, we know that users are searching for information. They're trying to get tasks done. They want, they want services from the town and they want information about the town. So what we've done with the mobile experience here is really pare down on the graphic design of the site. Of course, it is true to the Waxahau branding, but we did make it very task oriented and service oriented. We talked a little bit about budgets, right? So I did update the first button here to say budgets. It's a matter of clicking a button and then getting to the page where you want. The staff does have the opportunity to make edits to that mobile homepage. And it's just as simple as going over to our configurations, home buttons, mobile enhanced, clicking edits. Edit, excuse me. Perhaps we want this to be jobs, employment opportunities, what have you. We've got ample opportunity to go in and make those changes here. I'd have to dig a little bit to find the link that I'm looking for, but you get the point. It's just a matter of changing the title, changing the link and hitting publish over here. It updates right away for you. So I know that mobile experience is very important. It's going to continue to be important. And that's why we build in the opportunity for town staff to be able to come in and update the mobile experience on the homepage as your site visitors' needs evolve over time. That is a very high level overview of the website where it stands today. I did touch on, you know, we are, we have training scheduled. Once training is complete, we are going to give the opportunity to the staff and to the town to have access to the backend of the site prior to the launch. And so we'll be scheduling that launch. Likely by the end of May, the launch will be scheduled is kind of my anticipation here. And then barring any issues that require additional work for us to resolve, which we absolutely will if issues come up. We anticipate launching towards the end of June. Any questions for myself or for Jenny here? Or Jenny, is there anything that you'd like me to cover that I didn't?
Nope, you hit on everything we wanted to cover.
Great.
That I had planned, but I'd love to hear from the board.
Absolutely. As would I.
I've got to admit, I like where you've gone. That's a lot of work. You're right. In a lot of these areas, we didn't have this capability, especially on the mobile side. It looks like it's easy to manage even probably, I could probably get in the backend over there and change things around. So never let me come in and do that. I think that's a great way to go. It looks very, it's visible to me. You can see things much more clearly. You can, your eye directs to it very well. So I like the separation of colors. So long overdue.
And our, our graphic design team is specially trained in that area. So we do definitely focus on the psychology of how the human eye is moved across a website. And our graphic design team does go through extensive training to make sure that we build a website that takes people's eyes and directions that we want them to go.
And that is a big note. I mean, we took all the fonts that we were currently using and simplify them so they're clear, more legible, more ADA compliant. And what he said earlier, that the higher contrast, so even though the gray isn't in our brand color story necessarily, we chose it because it creates this nice bold contrast, make it easier to find things. So there, it is Make it easier to find things. So there, it is simplified for a reason, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes.
It look, it looks great and I really do appreciate where it's headed since my wife does things similar. I can, uh, she'll have fun with this one.
I did also want to um touch on something Commissioner Morey brought up last time, the user experience as far as um working with Rec Desk and all the different portals. So we're working our best to tie all of those in um visually. So you feel like you're still in the website because, for instance, Rec Desk, they have their own login piece and it, it just does a great job of doing all of your um event registrations and everything that it needs to do, but we want it to feel like you're still in our website. So we built what's called an iframe. So it looks like a window within the Waxaw website. So while we can't necessarily duplicate the experience, we can make it feel like you're still within the site and you're not leaving out of it. So that's something we're working with all the departments to integrate their technologies into the site to make the most, you know, the best user experience we can possibly make um within the tools we have.
Jenny, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Please go ahead.
So, um, I, I understand what you, what you're trying to do here. Uh, I, I'm hoping that the, I guess the space allotted for that particular page will be much more than, than let's say what you have there. As an example, for our agendas, when we get them, uh, we, we get a bit of a split screen or in some uh I, I hate to use this, but i- in, in some older uh sites, you'll, you'll have uh, a much more narrow area where you can uh, where that actually comes in and it fits in. So I'm, I'm hoping that
Yes.
area provided i- is going to be a lot larger so that you're not uh, struggling to get the whole page without maximizing or, or sliding side to side. I, I, I don't know if, if, if you understand what I'm, what I'm getting at.
I absolutely understand what you're getting at and I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, one of the benefits of our backend here is, I don't want to get too technical for, for the leadership team here tonight. But we do have the ability to edit the HTML of each page. Um, in older sites, often this, this opportunity was limited. What you can see here, um, it's probably really difficult to see over the Zoom meeting, but I have this one set to a hundred percent of the page template width. Um, we would likely do a different page template here in order to fill out the entire page. Um, you have the opportunity to control this very specifically. In older sites, you often had to choose, you know, a hundred and fifty pixels by two hundred pixels or something to that nature. So very, you know, in the weeds, much more so than I was kind of hoping to go, but the idea here is for very specific pages, we've got the ability to fine tune them at the code level. Okay, it's more than just updating like a Word document, but we can actually go in and change the code for each of these. I hope that is kind of where, where you're thinking and, and answers your question.
Uh, it does. And, and as, as a suggestion, if it's even possible, uh, that column to the left, is there any way to put that up on top and to maximize the uh the uh viewable rest state, that, that would make the most sense, I think.
Yeah, there, there is opportunities to do things like that. Um, we do have full width um page templates available. Of course, we will make recommendations based on our own user experience research and the data that we've collected and our expertise in the industry for how to best do that on any individual page. The page that we're showing here, um, this is just an example for the purpose of tonight's presentation. It is not something where we would have this go out to the public as is.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I just have a few comments. I, I think it looks fantastic. I'm excited. I can't wait for it to go live. Um, one of the questions I have is, so if you were on a laptop and you shrink your screen, will it go to that mobile view like you showed us?
Yes.
Not on a laptop. Um, if you shrink your screen all the way as I've done here.
Yeah, it works fine.
Yep, I'm sorry.
I, I was like, if I shrink my screen, it does, yeah.
It will respond to the, to the window width. And so what it will respond to is however big your web browser is. If you're on a thirteen inch laptop screen and you have it set to full screen, that's about this wide and it will show you this. Um, but if you were to minimize your window like this, you can mimic the mobile experience.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty cool.
That is really good.
That's really cool.
You guys, I, I, you can do this on a lot of websites. If you ever want to test out their mobile experience, what a lot of, what a lot of my um clients will do is they'll go look at their neighboring towns and say, oh, look, our mobile experience is way better. And you can kind of test it out around your neighborhood, um, so to speak. So I'm happy to, I'm happy that you, that you're pleased with it.
I'm also just gonna throw this out there because I'm excited from a visual standpoint. We can at some point swap out the picture for video if it doesn't mess with the user experience, but there's, we have so much flexibility in design, the background imagery. We can even have it, you know, rotate out. Each time you visit, it's a different image. So that's nice, too.
I would like to see that. I mean, I love this image, but I mean, I feel like we've had this for a long time.
I know. Yes, yes. So I, that's exactly what I wanted to throw that, that note in there.
Something, something fresh or rotating.
Hmm.
We've got flexibility. That's the name of the game. Um, my goal is that when we launch this website, your staff does not need to have to contact Granicus to make changes. Your staff can do it on their own.
And it looks pretty intuitive on how, how they go about doing that. It looks pretty simple.
And that, to your point, is the re, the, one of the big reasons why we chose Granicus because their backend content management system was much more flexible, adaptable, quickly, easily updated. Is why we like that over what we currently have. Um, and it takes a much longer time to update pages.
Yeah, it just seems really easy. You, you, you edit your text and you create, you know, you find the file system and the link and it's very similar to like how you use a, a document or a tree. So you, it's just very intuitive, which is great and would be great for the staff.
That's great. Thank you for the nice words.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the group? All right, I see no hands being raised right now, but what a wonderful thing to accomplish. We've been working on this for how long? And now we've had going on, can't wait till it gets launched. Uh, certainly, we're going to have uh, you know, some comments, I'm sure, from uh different users, different things. And as we all know, like a lot of things we do today, it is kind of what I call a living document. And just, but the good part is what I'm seeing is that we can do that from here, so to speak. So if we do our job training, uh, that'll be great. Who are the anticipated staff that will manage this site internally here? Have we selected that yet?
Yeah, so we have about approximately twelve users that are dedicated for their departments to be able to make updates. But I think it's also on the plan to have someone that owns it internally at some point, you know, web admin person. So because while you will be trained on it, if you're not in it every day, it can be really difficult to figure out where you need to go and make a quick update. So we discussed as a team internally that it's best to have some person that owns that and consistently makes those updates. So I think that's on, on the plan, but of course Jeff can speak to that, too.
Yeah, you, you'll see in your upcoming um budget workshop that we hope to uh have published for you by tomorrow, that one of the proposed positions will be a website slash social media administrator.
That's great. Nothing, it's going to be important to manage your content. Uh, let just then go willy nilly, if you will, anybody who wanted to change it at any time. I think that we need to do a better job of managing messages uh than we have in the past. So I think it's going to be very appropriate for a filter uh like that person, certainly with the guidance of the town leadership at the town manager's level and certainly with Jenny's uh input as well. But I, I'd want to keep an eye on that uh going forward. Want to make sure that we, we don't go too far. Peter, I see your hand up.
Um, I, I won't get too far into the weeds and I'll try to keep this high level, but the technology that we've built, that's available to you allows for your staff to have that flexibility. We do put in some, um, some bumpers or some rails that you all can elect to stand up or to not have in place for each individual staff member. Additionally, uh, that webmaster person, um, website manager person has the ability to add and to edit users' abilities within the backend very easily. I won't get into showing you that, but it's just as easy as everything else that we've showed you here today. And that is going to be part of our training in May is showing your team how to add new users so that when you've got new hires, um, you can create new accounts for them. And when staff members leave the town, God forbid, uh, we can deactivate those user accounts.
Okay, I just, again, I just want to make sure that we can do a grand job of managing the output that goes out there and, and not have it be subject to somebody's great idea at the moment. So that'll be up to uh Jeff, obviously, to put those protocols in place with the people who do manage that. And every so often, I know Jenny will be looking as well. So uh, that would be my only input is just to uh make sure we can control that output.
Yes, yes. It is really cool how you can have it now. So you have it where you have the department head has to approve it. Then the next level has to prove it before it goes live. So it is sort of set that way initially while we go through training.
And I think, I think that's important, you know, to, because we're going to have a lot of people moving around. Till we all get a comfort level and that, that person that we bring on board has a real comfort level with the uh, we'll call it the tone and the flavor of the leadership, then you know, we'll get more comfortable. But uh initially, I'd certainly want to watch that. So. All right, any other comments? Anybody around the horn that I can see? No hands raised. Great job, guys. Boy, this has been a long time coming and, you know, very much needed. So Jenny, thank you, your team. Peter, thank you for all your work with us in there. I know it's been a lot of legwork.
Well, I appreciate you all having me tonight and I appreciate the opportunity and I'm very happy to hear that you're excited. I certainly am excited. And uh, we'll see it live uh before you know it. Thank you all.
All right, we're looking forward to that. Jenny, any other comments in closing?
Nope, definitely happy to see this come to the finish line pretty soon. So excited.
We are as well. So thank you very much, both of you, for being here tonight and uh giving us that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, we're going to move down to their, uh, no public hearings tonight. We're going to move down to some old business. This is just cleaning up the, a couple of things uh on the refinance of the Waxall Police Department. And we're going to go back to town manager Jeffrey Wells. Jeff, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So the public hearing on refinancing of the police building debt was completed on April thirteenth along with the twenty-four hour comment period after close of the hearing. The final resolution is the board's final obligation towards completing the process. The final resolution will allow us to proceed to the local government commission's approval and to closing. We are set already for LGC approval at their May fourth meeting with our uh financial consultants, uh, they're from Davenport helping to lead that. We are set to close by mid-May. And just a, a quick synopsis, very quick. I know that we've been over this a couple of times, so no need to go over it extensively. But uh, we are looking to save approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars over the remaining life of the loan, which is approximately seven and a half years. We keep the same maturity date of October twenty twenty-eight. It reduces our interest rate in roughly half down to one point three eight percent. The bank fees are very reasonable at uh up to eighty-five hundred dollars. And it's prepayable in whole or in part, which offers us great flexibility moving forward. And staff recommends approval of this final resolution and I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions if you haven't. Thank you.
Well, this brings us to again, saving a few more bucks, seven and a half years, one point three eight. Wow. I'm used to seeing another number in front of that one in my lifetime. So one point three, it'll certainly take us where we want to go, pay it off. And as you've stated previously, Jeff, we, we do have the option, if we so choose, to uh pay the debt off early without penalty. So any questions for the town manager on this? This is just bringing it down to the last lap. Any hands up? Any questions? Very good. Saying none. I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution. Can I have that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Very good. Commissioner Morey made the motion to uh, go ahead and make the motion. You want to read it out for us?
I will make a motion to approve uh resolution two zero two one zero one three for the refinancing Waxall Police Department building.
Very good. Thank you. Motion is up uh for a vote. So we're going to do a roll call vote on this as well. I'll start off with Mayor Portem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Commissioner Westlick, aye.
And back to Commissioner Morey.
Mr. Morey, aye.
Very good. Jeff, thanks for all the work on that and all your team that put this together. It's just uh money found. So uh certainly helps for a program or two somewhere down the road. So appreciate that effort. We are uh looking forward to the mid-May closing. So that's a couple of weeks or more. And so uh keep us updated on that. And uh, we look to put this one in the books. So we're going to move down to uh item number two under the old business will be the uh the downtown tap grant supplemental funds request. So uh, we're going to have presenter on that one is our town engineer, Matt, Matt Huber. And uh, so Matt, floor is yours. Uh, wait for you to sign on.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Great. Floor is yours.
Thank you. The uh, it's that time of year again. Uh, time to talk about tap. It seems to uh be that project that just, we just can't get to the finish line. This one seems timely on a number of reasons. Uh, one, I think we have maybe um Jason's new and, and, and may not know exactly what, what tap entails. So that'll be an opportunity for him to uh, to understand the project. Let me see, do I have, do I have control, Nick? Yeah, too much control. Just a little bit of history. Um, the TAP stands for Transportation Alternatives Program. Um, we secured a grant through the CRTPO uh to improve both pedestrian and bicycle facilities, specifically in the downtown area uh back in twenty seventeen. It was applied for before I started and, and uh we were awarded right as I, I came aboard. Um, been diligently progressing that design. Um, and then in twenty nineteen, as we were approaching really the, the point to secure, finalize right away and, and move to construction. DOT's financial floor was, was um, was met. They had to freeze every project in the state and this was one of them. Finally, they have gotten back on uh secure footing and, and are enabling us to move forward. So the original scope of the project um was to convert East North Main Street block uh into a pedestrian plaza by uh creating a one-way street and using that official lane for additional sidewalk. Um, but still keep all the parking. So the parallel and the angle parking in front of the tracks would stay. Would also continue improvements along Broom Street all the way to Price. Always with ADA compliance in mind as downtown is, is severely lacking uh in, in ADA compliance. We're also uh completing some sidewalk on South Church Street to connect from seventy-five down to the skate park. And then Barnes Park does not have ADA to the, from the sidewalk on seventy-five to restrooms. And so we would be adding it in that location. That's the uh, the original scope. So this, I don't know how well you can see it, but this was an original mock-up that, that Blair out of planning was able to kind of update to uh, to show a visualization of, of the pedestrian plaza. Um, what you can see there is, is in order to make up the elevation difference between the finished floor elevations of those businesses and the, the steep drop at the street, particularly at Broom Street. Um, there is going to be a retaining wall between what is uh about anywhere from nine feet to eleven feet of now storefront sidewalk that they can use for, for tables or retail on the, on the sidewalk. And then in front of the wall, it'll be eight feet wide just for, for general public to pass. on the on the sidewalk. And then in front of the wall, it'll be eight feet wide just for for general public to pass. Street poles will be replaced with with newer fixtures. And then there will be bump outs at at both corners of the block to allow more room for retail on on say the Broom Street side and then for the ADA compliance, shorten the crossings as well. I think one thing that that's key to note here is where we needed to to make up the difference in elevation, the wall is on is on that western side, but on the eastern side, the grades change. And so that whole portion will be almost at grade sidewalk. So when we do close that block off for for festivals, you will not have the curb drop. You will be able to kind of flow freely from the sidewalk to the street. And which is, I think, a neat function that that we're going to be able to take advantage of when we do get to cut a ribbon and and enjoy this. So in the time from from twenty nineteen to now, a lot of things have changed. After two years of of dealing with CSX trying to get permission to add sidewalk in the right of way on the south side of the tracks in the green, that fell through. We were not able to come to an amicable solution. They they simply wanted too much money. They wanted to pay us to pay annually and increase that rate that in a in a way that wasn't sustainable or financially kind of a a great idea. And then because it's taken so long, we've we've taken to design and and what to build the the construction of the sidewalk from the Ped Bridge over to the Mill on Main as soon as possible. Again, best laid plans, DOT and CSX have still kind of slowed that down. I would have hoped to have gone to bid already. We're waiting on another contract review by CSX and and another plan review by DOT. But everything else is ready to pull the trigger on and and I would hope to bid that next month. So while all that has occurred, we've also been updating the plan on a number of fronts. One, for inflation. Two, some of the work has been changed to night work by DOT. That's more expensive and the cost for the project in general being a grant, we foresee going up just because of the amount of documentation required on these projects. So in addition to those increasing costs, we've also kind of pared them down with the amount of sidewalk that was reduced where we can't build in CSX. But we've also added some features that we think are going to make the plan better as we've had time to kind of contemplate them. One of them is is a Verter Island on the the West North Main Block at Main Street and Broom. What that's intended to do is is to remove the the number of traffic movements that you can make that conflict with with other traffic. Can be kind of knotted up when when everybody's trying to move at once. I think we're all have have seen that. So this intends to make it right in, right out. One, one West North Main, you still get to be able to get to those spots and 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 access it, but the movements, there will be less conflicting movements. And I believe I brought that forward in in a previous presentation. We're also going to revise the signal timing at sixteen, so pedestrians have more time to cross with no other traffic movements occurring. I think specifically when we talk about crossing seventy-five on the eastern intersection where there's that right on red, there's often not enough time. People are confused as to when they can really go. So safety wise, that that should provide them more a safer means to cross. And then we've added construction inspection oversight to the contract. Because one, we thought we would already have built this thing and and now our resources locally are are already committed. Additionally, with the amount of of effort it takes and the the number of requirements by to meet a federal contract, it it's much, makes a lot more sense in 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 time and money to make sure we're meeting all those commitments and get our reimbursement. So with all of that said, the original estimate for for construction was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars when we add in all the other changes and and the interest over time, we're coming to about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so I guess what was left out of this is that CRTPO has an open call for projects. This month, it closes. So with that in mind, we're proposing to request an additional two hundred thousand to make up the difference from the previous estimate. Because it's a local fifty-fifty match, the town would be required to to match a hundred thousand of that to make it whole. Those funds have already been put in the draft CIP budget that that has been put before you and will go forward as well. And I'm still focused on getting this project to let before the construction season ends. It's been long overdue and and one of my top priorities to to bring across the finish line. That said, my my recommendation is to to approve with a motion to allow us to request an additional two hundred thousand dollars during CRTPO's spring twenty twenty-one call.
With that, I'll open the floor. Great, floor is open for questions or comments? Well, I will make a comment for one. Matt, thank you very much for your perseverance in managing the last couple of three years between CSX and and DOT and keeping this alive. I think it's going to be important addition to, at least at this juncture, the North Main section there being one way in. It'll certainly prevent a lot of the cross traffic there at that intersection, which is a major disaster any time of day. So that'll be nice to have that right in, right out, or actually just right in at that intersection there. And if I remember right, we're going to get, we add about ten more parking spaces. Is that correct?
Correct. On the North Providence street side of the West North Main Block, we're switching from parallel to angle and that will add an additional yield of ten spaces when that's when that's complete.
That that'll be so welcome over there. We just, every little spot we can have, we we need. So if we can find another maybe we start parking on the bridge or something, I don't know. So I appreciate all the effort you put in it. I know what it's like to follow these projects through over and over again. They do move around a lot, as this one has, and certainly from the standpoint of some additional cost, I think we get such a strong benefit that, you know, we can, I think it's a well well-desired improvement.
No, thank you. And it's I think this money is going to be well spent. At the at the end of the day, it's going to deliver a better project. And and we've certainly had time to think about it, to be sure. So I I am very excited to get to that point. I know that we're going to be, you know, breaking that block apart and and there's going to be some some suffering involved in the middle of it, but I think at the end, when it's all said and done, we'll all be be very pleased with with the outcome and enjoy that for for many, many decades.
When would you think that we get through all this? We'll start with start of construction and then completion dates. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, you know, one thing that comes up in the discussion is is we have to, if we do get the CEI, the construction inspection piece, we have to go out to an RFQ process, which is is very set in in how, we can't really speed that up in terms of getting DOT's approval. So that is going to be something we're fighting against on top of, again, CSX and DOT outright. That kind of puts the biggest question mark in my mind. We have the RFP, I'm sorry, RFQ in hand, just waiting for the ability to submit and and then we can engage that as soon as possible. I think that's the biggest, biggest obstacle in in kind of controlling our own destiny destiny there. I think the one thing that does help us is we're not dealing in a you know, an open field. So a a little rain is not going to impact this project if we do get later in the season. So so that is a plus. I I'll kind of say, there's not a whole lot of work in in general, but it is complicated because that block is an old block and there's a lot under the sidewalk. So we know when we open up something like that, we've got who knows how many years of of decay occurring, both to utilities and the and the subgrade. And that's always kind of when the when the rubber meets the road. So, you know, I I can be optimistic and say it it can be over and done in three months, but there's a lot of other parties involved when we talk about Union County and and inspecting and signing off on the utility work we have to do. And so, you know, my my desire is to be done by Christmas. And that's mostly because even though I'm a patient person, I'm I'm really, I'm really chapping at the bit to get this one started and behind us. And 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 again, I just kind of have to temper that with with the understanding that this kind of work can't be rushed.
Well, I think you're right. And you know, it's like opening up, opening up a wall in a in an old house. You sometimes might be surprised in what you find. So we should expect that going forward. But I don't think it would impact us to change our minds on anything else. So job well done on keeping your foot on the pedal.
Well, and Mayor, this will be one of your projects that the board will be considering as part of your budget document this time and the town's first capital improvement plan.
Wow. That is awesome. So we have a plan, more than one year. I love it. Any other questions for the presenter?
Matt, I I have a couple of questions or comment maybe. And I know when the tap grant and this was originally put together, I think it was before some of us were on the board. It would be nice to maybe have you come back or maybe part of the the budget is to show the plan of what is going to be done. Because I remember watching before I was elected, like what was all entailing in the tap grant and what was going to be done for this. So it would be nice to maybe get us up to date with like what this all encompasses. And then the other question, and this might be a Jeff question, is I know we're doing the sidewalks south of the tracks and then we're going to have southeast of the tracks and this is going to be northeast of the tracks. Do we have? I know part of a bigger plan would be to be doing things west of Broom Street. And I just want to make sure that we we'll be able to keep the same consistency in design, that we won't have one block that's going to look different from the rest of the town as we move forward. And so we have consistency from block to block that, you know, this area looks this way and will be consistent throughout all all quadrants of the Main Street area.
Right. And we do have plans already drawn up for West North Main and they do mimic what we're doing on East North Main. They are not funded. They're part of the CIP discussion. And and when we talk about the South Main Box of that portion, because we kind of know something along seventy-five has to occur traffic-wise. I think that's that's one that that might go hand in hand, but so far we don't have any anything drawn up or any plans directly in in front of us to 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 make any any modifications on those those two southern South Main Blocks.
Yeah, I just like to make sure we have a cohesive look and feel to, I mean, the downtown is so historic and so important to our town is, it needs to have a a consistent look and feel. And I mean, I just don't want one block, I just want it all to be cohesive.
Agreed.
And along that same lines, if you remember that we pulled that one portion on the north side of seventy-five and we've taken that on ourselves. So that sidewalk will happen, as Matt mentioned earlier in his presentation. You get to bid maybe the bid process going next month and it's not that big of a project, just kind of redesign on the bottom of this, as Commissioner Morey had suggested, and then extending it over to the mill area. So looking forward for that one to happen. And thanks again for being creative to make that a a very, very real reality.
Well, I'll try. And the amount of effort to actually show nothing on the ground yet is is has been astonishing, actually.
Great. And I know the people at the mill are going to be very happy. So that'll, again, you got to start somewhere. We talked about some incremental builds throughout the town. So this is one of them we can get done. And yes, we're going to continue on to improve both sides of the boulevard there and also starting to look at the north-south on Broom Street from that intersection going up towards Waxell Parkway. So as you know, Matt, you've been involved in a couple of conversations with a couple of small projects up there. I'm still having conversations with DOT to try to get them to acknowledge a former plan. So we're working on it. So appreciate that. Anybody else? Any comments across the board? All right. Well, I think this one is probably, you know, had a long journey. And what I'd like to do on this is get a motion to approve the request to submit to the CRTPO's spring twenty twenty-one call for supplemental funds. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Tracy, if you could make the motion, please?
Okay. Motion to approve the request to submit at the CRTPO's spring twenty twenty-one call for supplemental funds in the amount of two hundred thousand for the downtown Waxall Tap Grant.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote on this as well. I'm going to start with the Mayor Portem. We have a motion on the floor?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Mr. Morey, aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Back to you, Commissioner Westlake.
Commissioner Westlake, aye.
All right, Matt, we haven't let off the gas either, so go for it, buddy.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, Board. Appreciate that. I'm going to drop down to new business. This is for the advertisement of the offer to purchase on the two-acre town property on Old Waxall Monroe Road. I'm going to go back to our Town Manager Jeffrey Wells on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. The town owns two acres of property on Old Waxall Monroe Road that has been identified as surplus property. We've received an offer of eighty-five thousand dollars. The buyer has deposited the required five percent to start the upset bid process. So upon a board approval, the town will advertise the bid for the required ten days. And then if no upset bid is received, the board may consider the resolution to authorize sale of the property at the board's next meeting. Staff recommends approval of the resolution for advertisement of an offer to purchase property. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for the Town Manager? We've been down this road on a couple of properties now, twice being with this one. So any questions on this? Saying none across the board, I'm going to ask somebody for a motion to approve this resolution. If you make the motion and read it out, we'll go from there. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve Resolution two zero two one zero one two, authorizing the advertisement of an offer to purchase real property.
Very good. Motion's on the floor. Going to do a roll call vote. Again, I'm going to start out with Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlake?
Commissioner Westlake, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Morey, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Back to Mayor Portem.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Very good. We're on our way to start the process. And as the Town Manager stated, if there is no upset bid after the advertisement, then we'll go into final closing documents. So appreciate that. It'll it'll help pay again for some more downtown stuff. So thank you very much for that effort. Okay, we're going to move down to the Town Leadership Reports. Jeff, you're still on the line with us, so I'll let you start first.
Thank you, Mayor. Three quick things this evening. First, just wanted to make everybody aware that we are just around the anniversary date of our first virtual meeting. It was actually the second meeting in April back in twenty twenty, if you can believe that. We've been doing this for a whole year. I just wanted to take a moment to basically shout out for our information technology team and how much that we appreciate, how good they they have had us looking for this whole past year. And of course, however long we're doing this for the spring and maybe into the summer, just really appreciate. I don't think people realize how much coordination goes on on the back end. Nick and Matt, and then also our clerks, Melody and Barbie have a lot to do with that. And so just really appreciate everybody that works really hard on the front end and on the back end to make our virtual meetings the successes that they have been. Next, I I think that some board members have had some correspondence with some citizens about the the smell that we, that some of us all experience from time to time in town. And of course, they think they've traced that. of course, they think they've traced that to a paper plant that's nearby in the state of South Carolina, just over the border, and NC Dean contacted us looking for a site to do some testing of the air quality. What they are searching for in the air is hydrogen sulfide, and they'd looked at a couple of sites they had targeted, they determined that it was a little bit too close to the sewer treatment plant, so they wanted to be at least a mile away. And what they really liked was to be in downtown, around our water tower, and so we actually had a very good site for them to locate. Dean and I went out with them yesterday, and they're actually perched on that utility building. They have the modern equipment out there on top of that building, it was a great site for them to test. I know that they are searching for another location in Mecklenburg as we speak, and they'll hopefully get that up and running sometime this week. We got contacted on Friday, and we have them up and running on a site by yesterday, so we're real proud of that. Everybody worked really hard to coordinate and make that happen. Lastly, we just got in the new census data for the United States and the state of North Carolina, just as, you know, a little bit of info, in case you're interested, the official US population is now 331,449,281 people. The North Carolina population is 10,453,948 people, and we will be gaining one seat in the House of Representatives. And so we are still on standby for the municipal numbers and the county numbers, they have yet to be released, but hopefully they will be released sometime in the very near future. That's all I got this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That's good news to hear and all that, and again, kudos to all of our town staff, town clerks, both of them, and our IT people. We brag on you guys all the time. We've accomplished so much in this year, and people always ask, well, how'd that happen? I really don't have the answers, but I know that it does, so I know it's all because of your efforts, Matt, Nick, Melody, and Barbie. Thank you for all you do for us all the time, you keep us right on course. So thank you very much for that.
It's our pleasure.
All right, any questions, thoughts to the town manager? Very good, seeing none, I'm going to drop it down to our Parks and Recreation Director, Dina Sabinski. Dina, you will join us, and you'll present tonight. She went home. She's playing with that sniffer, I know, there it is.
Hello, guys.
There you go, you're on, floor is yours.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. All right, can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so tonight, I'm going to give you an update on what's going on in Park and Rec and our upcoming events, because we are busy little bees on getting not traditional spring events, but pretty close to it. So we're almost busy every weekend going into the summer, so I'm going to go through these pretty fast, but if you have any questions, please get my attention, I will happy answer those. All right, starting off, we are in the middle of our program guide right now, from April to June, so we still have some spaces available and some upcoming programs. So this is how you sign up through Rec Desk, and we'd love to have you at the programs and events. Upcoming programs are our fitness on every Tuesday and Thursday mornings. We have around 10 participants on each of those mornings, so it's going awesome. Our adult program for mixology, that is full for this coming up month, we're looking for more dates. The upcoming for May for family pottery is full, but we are adding a new date in June. Chakotery class, we had one last week, which was awesome, everybody had a great time. We have upcoming still spots available on our May 13th, and our seniors are so happy that senior coffee is coming back. This Thursday is our first senior coffee from last year, because of COVID, we had to put it on standby, but so we're having our first one back this Thursday, and we already have eight seniors signed up, so they are super excited to come back. Our Mother's Day tea is this weekend, and we are full on both sessions, but look for similar programs happening in the future, and we'd love to have you a part of those. Hero Project, so tomorrow at Town Creek, we're having the fly, flying event, so they're getting to make their own kite, they get to decorate one, and then go out in the field to fly those out. And Mr. Billy was like, if we have any wind issues, we've got the air blowers that we're going to try to help them out with, so we're going to have fun either way, love to have you out there. And next week, we're celebrating our moms with a craft at our Hero Project for next Wednesday. This Friday is our skate night, lots of cool things happening on Friday night, where we have some giveaways. If you don't have a helmet, we will size you up for one. We've got wonderful sponsors that are helping us with the event, and Mr. Tom Rizner is helping out with homemade awards for our participants, so please join us, it's sign up at the event, it's from 5 to 7. And just in case, if we have rain, because it's calling for a little bit of rain, we have a makeup day on next Thursday. Next Friday, a week from this Friday, we are watching Star Wars, because, you know, next week is May the 4th, be with you, and y'all know I'm a nerd, so we are watching Star Wars at the Community Corner Park, and love to have you, but we need you to sign up ahead of time, because we're still doing our social circles, so please go ahead and sign up, and we'd love to see your family there. Save the date, we have over 300 pieces of artwork submitted for our art show with our elementary, junior high, and high school students. Usually this is paired up with our kaleidoscope, so since we couldn't have kaleidoscope this year, and we're changing that up to be a multicultural event next year, we still haven't available to have the art show, so please come and join us on that Saturday and Sunday to look at our wonderful youth art in the Waxaw area. Update on the downtown park. So we are working with the structural designers on what the look and feel of the structures are right now, and then we're working with playground installers as well to look the nature feel of the park. So we're really drilling down to what that look and feel is. We had some input with the Parks and Rec Committee, and we're super excited, of course, and then we're working on the topo as well for placement, and so I'll be able to give you an update soon on the progress on that as well. Oh, and the part of grant is being submitted this week, so yay. Volunteers and our sponsor space, so we're super excited. We've got three of our sites already dedicated. McDonald House, actually, that community, the Reinhardt Realtors are coming out on Thursday morning to do their spruce-up day, so we would love for more community partners with those other parks and on the thread trail. So if you're interested, please contact the office, and we'd love to set that up for Partnerships. So I know I say this every time I come on, but we love partnering, and we want to partner with you. So if you're a business, an instructor of fitness, an artist, please contact us, we would love to partner with you on upcoming classes and events. And totally, I'm an out-of-the-box thinker, so come with your ideas, I would love to hear them. At the moment in time, we are still in the Phase 3, and we're doing all of our protocol with that. The governor is scheduled to speak tomorrow, so we'll always keep updated with what's directed to us next. And I'll leave you with our vision and mission to keep us on course. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Hey, Dana.
Hi.
I have a question, and I wanted to see if you had an update on the butterfly project.
Yes, so we actually, so about a week ago, two weeks ago, we had our meeting with the art committee, and we had a youth, girls' youth group out of a church that is going to submit an application to do that. So we're going to, when they get me all their stuff, because they've got, they're only missing their interpretation of what it's, they want, they're kind of on the fence on what they want to present, and then I'll bring it back to y'all, for y'all to get the final okay, best with procedures, and then they're off to the races to make that work.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, that's good news to hear. That was going to be my question as well, so you got there in there first, so that's excellent. So what other big news you have for us?
I don't know, what am I supposed to have?
I just like putting you on the spot, so, but, all right, so any questions, comments, thoughts for Dina? We're looking forward to movie night for one, over on the corner, that'll be kind of fun, and tell me again about what Reinhardt is going to do, is it this Thursday?
Thursday morning, they are coming out, I think around 9 o'clock, and they're going to be helping, like, pull the weeds, and we've got mulch coming for them to spread out, and just to kind of spruce up the McDonald House on grounds area. And we're trying to get everybody on a schedule to do that, and this is their first outing with us, so we'll be more hands-on, kind of similar, we were a little more hands-on with the women's club when they came out for the first time, to, you know, just make sure that they had to lay the land, and we have all the, you know, we're the keeper of the stuff, so we have all the supplies, so we'll make sure that they're all geared up and ready to go.
Well, you're doing a grand job on getting more community involvement, so thank you, you're very visible, I steer people towards you every chance I get, that say, I want to be part of, so maybe we should have them on our new website.
New website, yes.
There you go, so thank you, Dina, appreciate that. Any other comments? All right, Dina, thank you again. Tonight, nothing, we'll move down to actually any comments from any of the board commissioners, anybody have anything to add for tonight? Brave souls out there, y'all want to go home is what you want to do, so, we're all home already, what am I thinking? So, anyway, all right, no comments, there's nothing on the closed session tonight, so I'm going to let all of you race to make the motion to adjourn tonight. Who's going to be first? Oh, y'all are killing me.
I'll make the motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Very good. Motion around, I'm going to call it around. Mayor Perrett McMillan.
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Hall, aye.
Commissioner Westlock?
Commissioner Westlock, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Commissioner Morey, aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Commissioner Simpson, aye.
Very good, thank you, everybody, it's a wrap, we'll see you next time, be good.
Good night, everybody.